Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call this July 6, 2022 Annual Organizational Meeting of the Mount Vernon Board of Education to Order. Please stand for the pledge.
The flag.
The flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to swear in our new superintendent, Dr. Bennett Conroy, our new trustees, starting with trustee Saunders, followed by trustee Kerwin, trustee Lindsay, and our student trustee Adam.
Do we need to stand too? Right there, just get in line.
No Bible? Or like a Dr. Seuss book?
Right.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Dr. Waven Bennett Conroy.
I, Dr. Waven Bennett Conroy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of superintendent of schools.
The duties of the office of the superintendent of schools.
According to the best of my ability.
I, Adrian Saunders.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office of school board trustee.
The duties of office of school board trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
I, Lorna Kerwin. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge. The office of school board trustee. According to the best of my ability.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Lindsay.
I'm Mark Lindsay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of office of school board trustee. According to the best of my abilities.
I, Rayanu Adam. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of office of student trustee. According to the best of my abilities.
Our next order of business this evening is the nomination of school board president and vice president for the 2022-2023 school year. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for president of the school board.
I'm sorry, before we continue, people are saying on Facebook Live that the volume is too low and they are hardly able to hear what's going on.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, so you can make a motion. To nominate someone for board president. Okay, do I have a second for that motion?
I still have a motion.
Any other nominations for school board president?
I nominate Darcy.
Do I have a second for that?
I have a question, maybe I should ask a question now?
It's a motion on the floor, I think.
Yeah.
Just a question, please, and not to... Just a point of clarification. Can a person run consecutively two years?
Yes.
Is there a policy on that?
There is not.
So we have no policy on that? Just wanted to know.
For...
So what does that mean? What does that mean?
I'm gonna take the vote. On the motion to elect Adrian Saunders as president of the board of trustees, I have a motion from Jeff Redd, seconded by Mark Lindsay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Do I have... Oh, I'll now open the floor for nominations of school board vice president for the 2022-2023 school year.
I nominate Wanda White.
Any questions, comments, or concerns on that?
Are there any other nominations?
Any other nominations?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
After the oath to... You and Wanda. I'll start with the...
You write the oath of office. Second oath of office.
I, Adrian Saunders.
I, Adrian Saunders.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of office of school board president. According to the best of my ability.
I, Wanda White.
I, Wanda White.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of office of school board vice president. According to the best of my ability.
So we have a consent agenda tonight for the reorg. Now's the opportunity for board members to remove any item from the consent agenda.
Can I please have a motion and a second to approve annual appointment of officers?
Motion.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve annual appointments?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve annual designations?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve annual authorizations?
Motion.
Second.
Authorizations.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve faithful performance blanket bond for all persons or positions required by law or regulated to be bonded?
Second.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve annual resolutions 10.2 through 10.9?
Motion.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have one question. Mr. Silver, the student accident insurance coverage, is that a new provider or have we been using them in the past?
We've been using pupil benefits for maybe 15 years.
I just don't recognize any.
Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, I'll show you in a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we adjourn, I just ask our district clerk to please tell me what did I abstain from because I may change my vote since I was having issues with my laptop, my tablet, and I wasn't able to see what we were talking about, so I thought it was something else.
Annual appointment of officers.
Okay, yeah, I did not abstain on that, I'm sorry, my apologies. That's a yes to me.
Is there another proposal you'd like to?
No, that was it.
That's for the regular meeting, we start with the reorg agenda.
You sure you want to go into exec? You want to go into exec now?
Can I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you tell us how long? Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes.
And then we'll come back and do the regular agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
And second.
No, you got cooties.
Aye.
Aye.
The Mount Vernon Board of Education recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person, by phone, or by email. The board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Tom Keller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A few things on the budget and related matters.
Congratulations. Congratulations to the new trustees, Adrian Saunders, Lorna Kerwin, Mark Lindsay, Melissa Munoz, but she didn't follow up. Condolences to those that didn't make it, better luck next year. As I mentioned before, I think we're gonna have a real loss on the Budget Committee with Melissa not being on, although she's got a couple of months to decide whether she wants to be on as a member of the public. And then since the last meeting, I got a resignation letter from Rick Powers. Rick's probably the most important person on the Budget Committee. He's spent an incredible amount of time over the last eight years. One of the projects was looking at Mount Vernon, Yonkers, New Rochelle, White Plains, and coming up with the proof that we have a lot of overhead, infrastructure, older schools, staff by people, obviously. And this is something we have to reckon with. I mentioned, maybe a school like Williams has to be closed, or some other school, Parker or Hamilton, I don't know. You get one of these schools, one of the Turner schools, it's got 200 people in it and it probably holds four, five, six hundred. Some of the other schools have more capacity as well, including the high school. So I would hope that Rick Powers would change his mind and come back in the fall. Otherwise, we need some new people on the Budget Committee to help out. Right now, I'm only a public member. I read the... Excuse me, I'm recovering from COVID, my kids gave it to me. I went on the website and I saw the number of people graduating from the different schools. Mount Vernon High School, 213, Davis, 114, Denzel, Washington, 54. That's 381. I don't have the beds numbers, Mr. Silver probably has them, the beds numbers as of October 1st, how many started the senior year? And we know how many graduated, 381. And how many started three or four years ago as freshmen? And the percentage? We have 381 graduating. It seems a little low because I thought, one of the things that's happened under Superintendent Hamilton was that we were graduating more, there were fewer dropouts in the 11th and 12th grade, and so forth. But from these numbers, it wouldn't seem to be the case. I think we have to look into these and, you know, and find out what the percentage is. Especially when I read in the Journal News about Yonkers having some 90% graduation rate. Now, also, of these 381, how many were Regents diplomas and how many were local diplomas? Because there's a difference. And one of the reasons why we were graduating more people, I think, was because there were local diplomas.
Just a couple of minutes.
I never got an answer for Hamilton on this, down at the Graham School a number of years ago when I brought it up. Boy, one minute left? Is that it? All right, let's see. Okay. I want to meet the new facilities manager, replace Mike Policchio. I mean, we still have this pothole out here coming into the parking lot, which is a disgrace. Come on, let's fix it. I live near the high school, there's a number of potholes in the high school, on the gym side, the parking lot on the gymnasium side. And we need to plant a few more trees there. I don't know, it's exhaust from cars that destroy the trees, but there's two or three trees that, you know, disappeared. And another thing is the athletic fields should be open to the public, tennis, track, other things, and they're not. I was over there on Tuesday, both gates are locked. We need to address this. People are paying tax money. We should be able to use the facility when it's not in use by the students. All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg Bonaparte.
I'm almost scared to get over here right now. So there's been a lot going around in the internet, so I just want to address some of the issues. There was a verbal assault on May 17th. I was gonna get into it, but I don't want to get into it. But I would ask, just for clarity, anyone who was perpetrated or felt they were hurt, could you let the public know what happened? It's all ass, because if it comes to me, oh, it didn't happen, it didn't happen. Please be transparent, let the public know what happened. Last year, I sent dozens of emails to the superintendent and board. They were from desperate parents whose concerns were not being addressed. I sent videos of fights at the high school and the warning, someone is going to get killed. Too many, I feel, did not care. Someone was killed and many more. Kids are petrified just to go to school. Services were not given to students, bullying was rampant. Uneducated former students are now on the streets with nothing to do, now resort to crime. High taxes have contributed to driving the elderly and financially strapped into foreclosures. When warnings are given to me or to anyone else, but to me because some people in the public feel that the district is not listening and the community is not being served, I will continue to make those issues public. Now, there are questions about my validity of so many things that I put out regarding statements of a board member, so if the board is interested in it, I ran out of paper. I have 20 some odd sheets of texts, one saying, please delete our conversation, I might be in violations of some rules here. The board wants them, they're here. I stand by my statements in the past, our tax dollars were not spent wisely, money is missing. Money has been misappropriated, and if audits are in the works, we will soon find out that the district has not met the needs of the students and taxpayers. So if I'm wrong in the future, we'll see, but I stand by that. I will say, since Madam Superintendent has taken the helm, I have not received one complaint from anyone.
It's going to happen in one minute.
Who did not have their concerns addressed. So I think that that's a good start. We should address the community and we should be transparent. Thank you.
The volume is still low on Facebook Live.
They can't hear anything.
Our next speaker is Axel Iberman.
Good evening, dear trustees, dear members of the public. First, I want to welcome the new board members and commend every single one of you for not only running for public office, but also serving a volunteer capacity. I think that needs to be pointed out once in a while, you guys are not being paid for this, you're doing this as a service to the community. It is not an easy task, and you sometimes get more than you bargained for, which leads me to my next point. There have been two recent resignations of board members and rumors of a third resignation, all connected to the toxic and hostile atmosphere that seems to have enveloped this body. We don't necessarily control our spouses, and sometimes we don't even see eye to eye with them. My wife can certainly attest to that. However, family members of board members are publishing slanderous hit pieces on other sitting board members. It is certainly not helping to create a productive and amicable atmosphere. If there is alleged misconduct by a member of this board, as alleged by the prior speaker, this board should deal with it following its bylaws, ideally in executive session behind closed doors. For the sake of Mount Vernon's children and for the sake of the greater community, I want to urge you to lead by example, also when it comes to public discourse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Stuckey. Our next speaker is Mark Stuckey.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, once again, my name is Mark Stuckey. Um, I'm here to speak directly to our Superintendent. Dr. Conroy, you are taking a position that's going to have a lot of weight and you know this. Thank the heavens that we went out of this school year with not one incident.
One what?
One incident. Nothing went wrong. The closing of the year was beautiful this year. You're going to have friends who say they're your friends, who sits on the left and the right side of you, who are going to wind up throwing chaos into the source, just trying to discredit you. You and I have come a long way and we have been around and we have worked with each other. I do know that you have a good heart for the city of Mount Vernon educational system. Whatever you do, you do it straight open. You have haters that will hate you. Stay focused. Watch your back, as they say in the military, watch your six. Don't let no one change your mind. Please. You was here as our interim two times. When I was here, not too long ago, and now you are the Superintendent. Something that is very well past due. Things have been taking place behind the doors that no one would ever see that you have done. You have those who will talk about you saying that you have not done anything. But you have propped up, pushed up, and made everyone in front of you wind up looking good. Now, show what you've been doing behind those doors. You have always had an open door policy, as I know of. You have always been transparent, as I know of. Continue to stay focused. I know people who will say, ooh, he's going to get her real good. I have no problems with you. If I was to sit on this Board, you know I will give you 400% and I will cover your back at all costs. When I say I am your friend, I am your friend. People will have to step in between me in order to get to you. That's how much I have your back. I will not come to this podium to say anything wrong unless I come to you first to check it behind a closed door. We must stop doing things in the public's eye as far as fighting each other. Other districts are looking at us and higher up are looking at us and constantly talking about us. In order to make a change, we have to start here to make that change. If I want to beat you up, it's time for us to beat you up, for me to beat you up behind that closed door first. And we should be able to come to some kind of agreement then. But let's stop fighting each other because nothing will be accomplished. Two things, one thing left. Taxes are always going to go up. No matter where you go, where you live, taxes are going to go up. It's up to you, the Board Members, to stabilize it, to help the residents of Mount Vernon. Bring the residents to be a part of it. As Kalu Wanda is saying, he's the only person who sits on the Budget Committee. Oh, Kalu, bring some people in. Bring some, oh! Please, please. Bring some people in. And we can wind up doing something different here, Mount Vernon. We can do something different. It's a new time. COVID has changed everything for us. So let's change. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Gallagher.
Talk about a dangerous job. Good evening. I'll take my mask off in a second. Good evening, my name is John Gallagher. It's been quite some time since I've addressed you as a Board. Some new members are on there and I would say congratulations to the two new Board Members, Warner and Mark. Congratulations to the previous Board Member who won reelection, Adrian. And congratulations to our new Superintendent, who I've talked to before in the past. I would say congratulations to Ken Silver, but he's been here for a while and he knows where I stand on the budget. I'm not going to talk about the budget tonight, so if anybody's worried about me with firing Brimstone tonight, I'm not in that mood tonight. I didn't know what mood I'd be in. I wasn't in a happy mood earlier and then I decided to sign up to speak. What I want to talk about tonight is a couple of things. First thing I want to talk about is, as a school Board, what your responsibilities are. You are like the Board of Directors in a corporation. You are the ones who give the, set policy, give orders to the CEO, who happens to be the Superintendent. It's not reversed, as it has been in years past. It shouldn't be the tail wagging the dog. And that's what I've seen happen before. You set the policies, you look at what's going on, and you follow up on it. That's exactly what I expect you to do. Most of you people that are sitting on the Board up there, I helped put on, except for one. I work for them and their campaign and I expected things to be done, which I wanted to see the better the school district. A school district should be about educating our children the best way we possibly can at the lowest cost to taxpayers' dollars, okay? We cannot afford it. People were concerned to me and said to me, John, it's only a half percent tax increase. I said, no, it's more than that because the assessed values in Mount Vernon have been going down. I pointed out to Mr. Silver and other people that are aware of it because I get involved with the city budgets and county budgets too. And I said, in addition to that, the assessed, besides the assessed values going down, you also have to look at the STAR program. It's been reduced. So that means you're going to pay more taxes. People that are getting the STAR and ANSTAR that were getting $3,000 or $4,000 off their tax assessment aren't getting that anymore. So that means your tax is going to go up because other people aren't paying it. In addition to that, we were hit with a, you know, 5% county tax increase, 5% they tried on the library, and people were just fed up. It turns out that it came through a budget vote and you are the only municipality or entity, besides the library, that allows that to happen. So, the reason why I bring all this about is because about 10 years ago, no, maybe 12 years ago, my organization Concerned Property owners in Mount Vernon, we were fed up with what was going on in this school district. There was a new faction that had taken over for many years. Our schools weren't getting any better. Years before that, when another faction had it, they weren't doing very well either. So what we decided to do as a group, the North Side, the South Side, the East Side and the West Side, came together as a group and middle Mount Vernon educators, some city people, some school officials, some prior teachers to try to change our school district. And that's what we did 10 years ago. We put a platform out here, which I have in front of me, which goes back to 2012, where we asked certain things to be done. There was one person on the Board who ran for reelection again this year and she was part of that original group. And I will say with confidence, she's a friend of mine, so let the public know she is a friend of mine, that this woman actually implemented with the rest of our school people some of the stuff you're seeing the benefits in the school district today. For example, K to 8. K to, uh, high school to 12 years. And STEAM Academy vocational programs. We hired a Superintendent, which didn't turn out the way, yes.
Your time is up.
Which didn't, I'll wrap up in a second, which didn't turn out the way we thought it would. However, we got, it seems to be we got a new Superintendent. Let it be. I hear you, dear, thank you. Thank you for your time. I will continue this later on. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Turnquest Jones.
It's off. Good night, everyone. My name is Cynthia Turnquest Jones. I reside at 444 Seneca Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. And as for conversation with Dr. Bennet Conroy, I promised her that I will continue as an educator in the community as well as in the school district. So Edward Williams Elementary School is located on 9 Union Lane in Mount Vernon, New York. I made many visits to Edward Williams and found that their reading program is up and running with reading interventions being championed. Now accompanied with the new curriculum that's going to be resuscitated, I am excited to see them go from good to great. Revitalizing the school library and other libraries in Mount Vernon City School District will continue to be my charge. Edward Williams Library currently have 11,445 books in their collection. The shelves are overstuffed, which results in books being lost. This requires the librarian to actually go shelf by shelf and book by book. I have a crew who is willing to be a part of revitalizing the Edward Williams School Library. The principal and librarian cannot carry the task by themselves. The average age of a book at Edward Williams School Library is 1998, which is 22 years of age. Fiction books around 17 years old. Nonfiction books are around seven years old. The life of a nonfiction book should be the life of the President of the United States tenure. The last time Edward Williams School made an order with Title Wave was 2019. I am not sure about the volume of books that were ordered that time. Any book before 2011 needs to be looked at because that is a 10-year of, of, year of publication. The current climate is not reflected in books that are 10 years old. Unless it's a classic piece, like Winnie the Pooh. When books are not weeded, the shelves are then inaccurate. There are currently collections erected since George Floyd murder in 2020. These collections address the following: diversity, equity, and inclusion, plus social and emotional topics which came up during the height of COVID. The importance of teaching our young students to care about learning has been lost for quite some time. At this time, we have the opportunity to create and transform. If we do not create the future of the new library, the direct impact will be detrimental to our children here in Mount Vernon. A library that represents a 21st school library is at STEAM High School. Jeff Reed and I visited it there. The question is, do our books meet the needs and demands of the library's community of users? The answer is, we will make sure that it does. I am looking forward with continuing the action of revitalizing the Edward Williams School Library and other school libraries across Mount Vernon Public School. My name is Cynthia Turnquest Jones. I live at 444 Seneca Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York.
Our next speaker is Damaris Monet.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Damaris Monet. I'd like to congratulate the new Board Trustees, I mean, new trustees, as well as welcome back Superintendent. Appreciate it. You were around when my daughter was in elementary school. My daughter just turned 20 on July 4th. As I mentioned, my name is Damaris Monet. I reside at 346 South Fourth Avenue. I have been a resident of Mount Vernon for 20 years. I formerly worked for the New York State Senate representing parts of Mount Vernon in the Bronx. And for a brief period, I served as a Special Assistant for former Mayor Wallace. I have run for office in Mount Vernon and I am a newly elected district leader. I am very familiar with the Mount Vernon power players, the heads of warring factions and who benefits the most from the city's dysfunction. If it's not the students, teachers, or the overly taxed paying property owners, I have been privy to the complaints and problems that have vexed Mount Vernon for decades. For over a decade, while working with the New York State Leadership, I have been asked countless times to speak upon issues of concern with the city of Mount Vernon, such as why is Mount Vernon one of the most, one of New York State's most expensive school districts with the poorest results? I've been asked about our controllers. I have been asked about our mayors and I've been asked about why our city has such low voter turnout. I'm here today because, and quite honestly, this is my first time being in front of the school Board, even though both my children are now grown. I'm here today because I've recently been reading articles that keep going back and forth and I am very concerned about it because quite honestly, I am tired of the reputation that comes before us and it seems to continue because people like to play games in public. I am concerned about the family trajectory of the school Board, their inability to lower costs, improving learning and graduation rates, stopping violence and murderous intents. The articles that highlight that this Board is ineffective and would rather work at a game of gotcha, but instead of focusing on how to better improve Mount Vernon and our reputation, this Board would rather engage in serious allegations, threats of employment and the division of our people by race. Serious accusations have been made publicly, but without public evidence. Are we to believe that the one sole Latina duly elected who's been in office for less than two years is responsible for the school Board's dysfunction and the mismanagement of the entire school budget? The following members have been in office and are responsible for the discretion of our school system. Adrian Saunders, you've been in office for nine years.
She's trained from using names.
Darcy, well, they're our Board Members, right? Darcy Miller has been in office for six years. Wanda White has been in office for six years. Jeff Reed in office for two years. Candace Orson for a year and a half. Before this Board continues making a mockery of our city, the system, and public trust, I truly have to ask, who's really the head honcho? In charge and why is the school system bleeding money, talent, and students? Where is the return of our investment? Maybe this Board should focus more on implementing solutions to better educate and prepare our students for a more equitable future instead of pettiness and waging war on fellow members to disparage. I would suggest, starting with the school Board's website and knowing how to spell government, which is on our front page. And it's really kind of embarrassing that on our front page of our school district's website, it doesn't even spell government properly. So I'd appreciate it if our Board could get together to work in the best interest of the city and not personal interest of each individual. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Couple months ago, we had a discussion on the gifted and talented students. We had several meetings about how we are going to address the issues and concerns that surround that program. So tonight, we have Dr. Gail Wallace White, who is going to present to us on the changes and what we have made of it. And I hope you will enjoy what she's going to present because she worked very hard on making those changes necessary. So with further ado, Dr. Gail White Wallace, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Special good evening to the community. Congratulations, Dr. Bennet Conroy. Congratulations to all the new members of the Board and the returnees. And it's always wonderful to see my colleagues here in the front. So, thank you, Dr. Bennet Conroy, for the introduction. Today is the beginning of a new season. And they talk a lot about seasons. So the administration that are currently sitting on our dais
So the administration that are currently sitting on our dais, my colleagues on the superintendent's cabinet, we've all spoken and talked about what it is that our community needs. And in that discussion, we have pledged to be as transparent as possible. And what does transparency mean? It means being clear about our goals, our mission, and what things that we are dedicated to doing. And in the words of Dr. Bennett Conroy, "We are dedicated to students, student success, student safety, and the balance in students' social, emotional well-being." So today begins a new tradition for the Mount Vernon City School District, celebrating and highlighting students. From now on, during each board meeting, we are going to talk about why we're here: teaching, learning, and our children. So I am honored to be able to be the first person to present this type of engaging discussion. We're going to talk about a program that was started simultaneously with the two thousand and twenty vision, the Atlas Program. Some may call it the Gifted and Talented Program, which was started with the founder, Dr. Evelyn Collins, who is now at the STEAM School. Next slide. The program has been existence for about seven, six to seven years, starting from grassroots, providing students with pull-out services above and beyond their core academic time. I'm here to talk to you tonight about what updates have been made. In October, I was given the assignment to begin working with this esteemed group of teachers. So here are updates for two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. When last we discussed, we began in our admission season. I am proud to report we had a successful admission season from January to May of this academic year. We were able to upgrade our testing for students to the Raven Color-Coded Matrixes II. This assessment and screener was chosen because it is non-verbal, allowing us to capture more students with IEPs as well as students that have been classified E and L. We are very happy with the results. Students received the assessment well, and they actually reported to us that they enjoyed taking it. Who would have ever thought about that, right? Children enjoy taking an assessment. Next slide. So here's some numbers to help you understand where we are. Our current program screens students in the second grade based on empirical data and studies that students' IQs are, become steady around the age of eight. Our entrance is second grade, where you see we have our largest group of tested students at five hundred and seven. We also test all students in grades three through six who have registered for school during this two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two academic year. That's to ensure that no student is left behind and they're not allowed to be screened for the program. So your numbers in front, being transparent, as we talked about, we have six hundred and nineteen students that did not meet the cutoff, and we had eighty-five students out of the seven hundred and four who were tested that were admitted into the program. There will be a small number of students who are tested in September, and those will be the students who were registered in the middle of April to the end of June of this academic year. So these numbers will fluctuate by October first. Next slide. So what we have in front of you are the student admit breakdowns by school. Just so you understand, the middle school students get all of the fifth-grade students that are admitted to that school for DWSA and Benjamin Turner School. This is a breakdown of the students who have been admitted to the program. These students received a lot of notification, as well as those students who did not meet the cutoff. All parents were required to sign a permission slip that their child could participate in the pull-out program, which does not occur during core subjects. They were given their certificate, and of course, they were given an invitation for a celebration, because we like to celebrate in the Mount Vernon City School District. Next slide. Our total projected enrollment at this time for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three year is two hundred and thirty-five students across fourteen school buildings. Those buildings that are not captured are students in grades eight through twelve because they are beginning their AP and Regent's Prep, and they are provided with their supplement at those times. Next slide. Welcome, welcome, welcome to our students. On the day that Noah and his ark visited Mount Vernon, y'all remember that day, June second? Was anybody trying to drive through the streets at that? I thought my car was gonna get whisked away. Although Noah and his ark came to visit us, we still had almost a hundred and sixty people come to our welcome event that night. The parents were excited. So during this event, next slide, we discussed with them what is Atlas, the assessment, the test, and you see the families lines up. They are signing in, they're meeting with their teachers, they were given dinner, of course, and we celebrated our students and we celebrated our parents. Next slide. You can see the Mount Vernon High School cafeteria was filled. We did practice some social distancing, and there's the staff welcoming the new students. We were very excited to offer, in a raffle, and you'll see the students standing up front, next slide, we were able to offer the students in the bottom left scholarships to the Pelham Arts Center over the summer. We will provide continuous scholarships to the Pelham Arts Center and other special activities for students throughout the year. The Pelham Arts Center has dedicated scholarships to Mount Vernon City School District, and we are going to have a benefit in March of two thousand and twenty-three to continue the support in this work. So we wanted to let you in on some of the magic, right, Taylor? So one thing I like to tell people is I love fancy and cute, and Atlas has swag. So we are giving everybody on the dais, board members, swag bags that the students who started in Atlas received that night. So you can see what they received to begin their journey in the Atlas Program. All students received a swag bag, and they were challenged to begin to think about how they are going to engage in the program in the fall. Next slide. There are the list of the students that showed up. Aren't they so cute? Nobody's making noise for the students? Nobody's clapping for the students? I'm sorry. They were all very excited and they felt very special. Last but not least, last slide. The discussion about changes and enhancements to the program. So after a few meetings and discussions, we talked about how we're going to enhance this particular program. The first is revamping, and you guys will see some resolutions and work about this, integrated standards-based curriculum. This is when I get to harass my colleague and my old high school buddy, Dr. Doggett, as we talk about aligning the Atlas Program with the standards for non-fiction text and reading, focusing on hard skills of research and writing that will connect to the core instruction on each individual grade level. The second, we will be purchasing culturally relevant biography studies for the students to study people who have created seminal work in the areas of astronomy, biology, environmental sciences, as well as in the arts. We also have our new UTEC libraries to support our research work in these areas. And last but not least, mentorship opportunities. And I'm so glad for our student member who's on the dais today, our student board member, because one of the mentorship opportunities will be with STEAM High School students that are working on special programs to mentor some of the students in the Atlas Programs for their year-long projects. We are building in, thank you for the support of our budget, our robotics and coding Saturday boot camps that will happen quarterly for all students, as well as theme-based academic trips, and our continued partnership with the Pelham Arts Center. These are some of the changes and enhancements that we are projecting and planning for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three academic year. Last but not least, there are no slides for this one. Taylor, you ready? We are sharing our work from this academic year. For the first time ever, we have created a live-action end-of-the-year final project journal of all of the work of the students in our program. In the program, you're going to see a QR code by each student's face. You can scan the QR code, and you will see their live demonstration and presentation of their ends of the academic year projects. There's also some highlights of our staff members, little bios of them, and most importantly, our seniors did some writing and reflection on their time. All of the seventh graders that are enrolled wrote about the impact of the program, what it meant to them, and how it's going to help them be successful throughout their academic year. And I know somebody's gonna ask the question, where are the QR codes for homeschool? Homeschool right now, there's a vacancy, and they were unable to complete an end-of-the-year project, but we are going to work with them on a special project in September. And that is the conclusion of our first student-centered, academic-centered presentation for this Are there any questions from the board?
Oh, you know I'm coming.
Come on, baby, I'm ready.
You know I'm coming. So first of all, oh my God, like, it sounds terrific, sounds wonderful. I'm really excited to see the essays, you know, and I'm really excited to see the robotics and all that stuff because in my house, that's what we do, you know. You said we have two hundred and thirty-five students, right?
Yes.
And we have the high school. And I'm gonna ask you the same, you know, because I know that you guys are revamping this. The question is, how many schools have allocated classrooms? You know, like Pennington, that he has his own classroom and he has his own teacher. How many of our, the fourteen schools have the same thing as Pennington?
So teacher allocation is based by enrollment.
Okay.
So it can change every year.
Okay.
So my job this summer will be to look at allocation. Based on scheduling, if there is a need for one teacher to be in that building all day long, then they will receive one teacher. So it's all based on scheduling. So right now, it's looking like Pennington, Lincoln will need its own teacher, possibly Trapp Hagan. We have a lot of kids this year at, between Graham and Park, Grimes and Parker, homeschool also. So we're going to look at numbers and schedules. But do remember, Trustee Horrison, if you want to give me a teacher for every building, I will hate it.
Well, I wish I could.
But I don't want to bust the budget. So.
I wish I could.
We're trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible and make sure that we schedule based on student enrollment and need.
Wonderful. And then the other thing that I want to ask is, can non-Atlas students engage in this amazing robotics program?
So we are going to have two types of programs, right? So we're gonna have some Atlas-only programs on the weekends. And then we're also going to have some exploratory programs also for students who are going to be interested in that work, right? So we are gonna provide opportunities for students who are not necessarily in the Atlas Program to be able to engage in some of that work. And the Pelham Arts Center has been gracious enough, and they really believe in our students, and I like to thank them for all of their work to provide additional support and activities for students who are interested. So you will see those come out in about November, once we solidify all of our partnerships.
Oh my God, thank you very much for your presentation, and everything sounds wonderful.
We're very excited, and one thing I do want to say that will make you squeal, are you ready to squeal?
Always.
So we have about twenty kids with IEPs that are in the program, and I knew you would enjoy that. And we have about twenty-six children who are marked E and L that are in the program. And that increase is due to the change in the screening assessment being non-verbal. So we were, we're very proud to increase the admission numbers in our subgroup areas because we believe it's very important in moving to a three-tier admission system. And a special shout-out to my staff who are all home relaxing for all of their hard work. Testing seven hundred and four children in thirty days and scoring is a lot of work. And we also did teacher recommendation and tiered, it was a lot of work, so kudos to them and kudos to all my administrators in their buildings for, for dealing with another testing schedule because it was on top of our regular testing schedule.
You knew that was gonna make me happy, that's why you said the squeal situation.
I know, I knew you were gonna squeal, so I just had to get your squeal, get your squeal ready.
Thank you for the squealness.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. White Wallace?
Yes.
I just want to say, whatever you touch turns to gold.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Just this book is fantastic.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, one more shout-out. Jennifer Cardillo at the print shop. Let me tell you, I can't forget her. Her and I were here till eight, nine o'clock at night, formatting this and working it and testing every QR code. And so I want to shout-out to her and Mike Thompson for pictures. And Mr. Ubira for taking pictures of the buildings and, um, he came out in the monsoon, and y'all know he lives two hours away, and he came down to shoot for us that night. So a special thank you to him also.
Thank you for your dedication.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Gayle White Wallace. This is what we're talking about at our board meetings, that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna start focusing on children, and this is the start of a new era.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And this concludes the superintendent presentation.
This time we have committee reports. Do we have any committee reports to discuss? Because at this time, we can also assign committees. Do you have any committee reports? Trustee Horrison? Wait, Trustee Miller, do you have a committee report?
Um, I'm not sure whether we're meeting tomorrow or Monday. I'm waiting for Dr. B.C. to confirm.
It's gonna, it's gonna be Monday, it's gonna be Monday.
What time?
Ten thirty.
So there's a meeting Monday at ten thirty here at the district, which will include Technology Parent Resource Center, PR, people, communications, parent liaisons to work on the launch of the Parent Resource Center in the fall and the launch of the new website, Monday at ten thirty.
Okay. Parent Resource. Okay.
Yeah. Parent Resource Center.
Okay. So Dr. B.C. and I, by the way, this is the special committee. Dr. B.C. and I met, and we went over the proposal for the drowning slash aquatics program for our special needs children in Mount Vernon. We will be meeting with the stakeholders in order for us to have everything planned and set up to start in and set up to start in August. That is our projected, um, starting time in August for, so our special needs students could, um, enjoy a nice summer camp during August. The other thing also is that we were discussing and trying to figure out for this not only to be an opportunity, even though our main objective are special needs, but we are trying to figure out how can we get involved, um, Coach Flores and, um, every other person in, in, in the, in the, that has capacity to the pool or has been renting the pool, to see how can we expand the program also to the rest of the community. So it's being worked on. I, I'm not sure if we're gonna start that piece in August because our goal is to start the special needs in August, and, but we are working on that to make sure that this is not only for special needs, but it's also for, um, the community in general, our kids to learn how to swim because it's extremely important. The other thing is that I know that I have discussed, not discussed, I have mentioned that, um, the parent workshops, you know, the CAC parent workshops, as in conjunction with the, um, special needs committee, we wanted to keep on happening during the summer. I was giving time for, um, our wonderful, wonderful Dr. Smith to close everything up, you know, during the summer and summer school and get everything running for us to sit down and meet. We, I was gonna call for the committee to meet to discuss when can we do a July one and when can we do the August one because I know people have been reaching out to me, on my, you know, via texts, that they were really satisfied with the parent workshops that we put together. And there was, there were, people see the need of it, and we need to continue. As a committee, we need to sit down and we need to continue to provide that support to our parents. So I will be reaching out to you, Dr. Smith, and to, um, President Sanders and Vice President White, because they are part, they are the other two parts members of the committee, for us to sit down and talk about the topics that we would like to cover in July and talk about the topics that we would like to cover in August and sit down and plan for the upcoming year, that way we could get September rolling immediately.
Thank you, Trustee Sorensen. I guess you don't have a committee yet. Trustee Redd, anything?
No, this, this, this year I have one.
Oh, yeah.
I'm ready for that.
Trustee White, anything from you? Trustee White, any committee report? So I'd like to establish committee chairs. Do you have a committee, Ray?
No, I don't have one.
Sorry.
That poor guy, he's gonna...
He's gonna get...
He has a whole student...
I have some stuff, I have some stuff for you to do. So we can establish some committees right now, if you wish, okay? So, um, we have finance and budget. Trustee Curran?
Is it two separate committees or one committee?
I do believe we separate, we separate, don't we?
Which?
The finance and budget.
No, finance and budget.
Do it together?
Audit, audit is separate.
Audit, audit, okay.
The audit committee is not, is the board's.
Okay. So would you like to do, I mean, you can do whatever committee you want, I just know you had mentioned that you like... President Sanders, maybe we should send out a list to all, to everyone so that we can sign up like, like that. So we just sign up and then transfer... Now, you wanna do it? Everything to you.
And also if you could include schools, assign trustees to schools.
Well, that was my next thing. And then also, when we do the schools, we wanna make sure we get PTA involvement, okay? So we can talk about the schools, if you want, just talk about what schools you wanna be assigned to, if you wanna do that right now or you wanna wait. I would just say wait and so everyone knows the schools that they want, so... So everybody can send me an email as to what school they want? Because there's...
I'm already a member of the Mount Vernon High School PTA, I've been there for years, so I think I'll just stick with that.
I'll stick with Williams and I'll, and I'll go to Parker.
Before I mention the schools that I'm interested, the other committee that we need to add to that list is the committee that Dr. B.C., myself and Melissa Munoz Patterson, we started, that is, is not, you know, part of the list. We started, and I think I mentioned it already, we started a non-English-speaking, you know, students committee, and we have already people involved, and, um, that's something that needs to be on the list.
Okay.
So as of...
Non-English?
Well, we, we, like, we, the committee have not yet decided the name, but it's like the point is for the committee to represent the non-English-speaking population of Mount Vernon.
Yeah, we call it the E and L Committee.
E and L, yeah, okay, E and L, that's perfect.
E and L Committee.
So are we doing schools, I'm sorry?
Yeah, we usually, we usually assign, we usually have trustees that are assigned to schools, um, just to go in and check and, you know, be a part of the PTA, any issues there, we can be, you can be the voice for that school.
Well, I'm a part of every PTA.
Okay.
In the district. However, um, I would take, um, Trapphegan and, hmm, Pennington, maybe?
Do we wanna do schools now or you wanna wait?
Oh, you wanna wait for the schools?
I'm waiting for Taylor's lead here.
I mean, if we're waiting for the committees, maybe we could wait for the schools.
I think just send out the list of who are...
Yes. I think it's the best way to send out a list and show people's interests.
Yeah, 'cause since we're waiting for the list for the committees.
The other question that I have is in regards to schools. I know that we have enough schools for everybody, and even two or three for each trustee. If two trustees have an interest in the same school, is that something that we have done before, that two trustees are, you know, the godparents of that school?
Yeah. As long as we cover all the schools.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
You can have four schools if you want.
No, I don't have time for... But, um, the other thing is, I did propose also a while back, I don't know if you remember, that also we should adopt, you know, we should become godparents of our teams. You know, each, you know, we have so many teams other than basketball, other than football, and, you know, the only thing that we hear all the time, you know, and don't get me wrong, like, our basketball team is amazing, but we should also, you know, adopt teams and us go and, you know, let them know that we care, let them know that it's not, we're not only a basketball track and football school. You know, we also love our soccer players, we also love our swimmers, we also love our, um, tennis players, you know, so I don't know if it's something that the, the, the board would like to engage in, but it would be a good thing for our students to know that we also appreciate them and we're not only glorifying three sports, you know. That's just me.
Okay, duly noted, thank you.
You're welcome.
So that's for committees, anything else? Any follow-up for old business? All right, so we'll go into the, um, the resolutions. Taylor?
Motion, a second to approve Human Resources Memorandum 62A certified dated July 6, 2022.
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Six, oh yeah, 5.1.
6.1, right?
5.1.
5.1.
Second, second, sorry.
I have a second.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion, a second to approve Human Resources Memorandum 62B non-certified dated July 6, 2022?
Motion.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have, Jesus crackers, I have a concern, and I know this is something that we have mentioned before here, and I know that this might be overstepping our boundaries as trustees. When we are voting on these people, not these people, I don't wanna say it like that, when we are voting on these positions to be filled, we, and we, not, not negating, and, you know, the importance of what you go through and all of the, you know, the interviews and anything, would, have we ever asked, have we ever, as a board, asked to see the credentials of these individuals?
At the cabinet level, we've always, at the cabinet level and the principal level, we've always seen their resumes, um, but not at levels below that, in my, in my... Yeah, it's, it's the high, the higher level.
Only for the higher levels.
We send the backup to confidential.
Right. It's in the back, yeah, no, no, okay, yeah, okay. Okay, no, okay, no. No, because, you know, it's like, it's just since, you know, it's, it's good to, for us to know, I'm just saying. Thank you, I will definitely check the confidential, thank you very much. Thank you.
So where were we?
Any further questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion, a second, to authorize complete budget transfers for 2122 fiscal year?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, um, when, when do we anticipate, Mr. Silver, when are we gonna, you know, feel like we've had this wrapped up?
I'm not sure your question.
Oh, the 22, so we're gonna be doing budget transfers to balance out the 22...
The 2122 school year is what we're speaking of?
Yes.
We have to balance out all the accounts?
I know.
Everything has to zero out?
And when, when, what's the timeframe on doing that?
The auditors are, have been working since May.
Right.
And they, they finish in August.
They'll be finishing in August, okay, thank you.
Any further questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and a second for the authorization to appoint staff for the 2022 Summer Food Service Program?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
No.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion, a second, for the authorization to extend the all-county bus company contract for the 2022-2023 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Just a quick question, was this, was this the, the firm where we had some concerns about the drivers?
Mm-hmm.
Not county, was it...
Was it all county or was it first student?
First year.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
And if, is, is the, right now, the, the, there's an increase on...
6.3% increase, which is the cost of living increase.
Okay, yep, that's it, yeah.
Which is huge.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion, a second, for authorization to extend Whitson School Nutrition Corporation Emergency Food Service Management Contract for the 2022-2023 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Questions? I know Whitson started out very well with us, and then they start going downhill a little. I hope that we can start a testing, maybe, to see what they're gonna present. We did it at the very beginning of them, but when we hired them at first. But now I get complaints all the time about some of the food.
Yep.
Dr. Bennett Conroy already has a meeting set up with Whitson's to discuss their program for this coming year and how they're gonna improve what they're doing.
Yes, thank you. Trustee Miller had a suggestion earlier about what to do, so I think we may, um...
I have a question as well, and this might be in, in ignorance for my part. Why are there so many cross-out items in this, in the explanation?
This was, this was an update of the emergency contract, which the state is now allowing for the last time. And it comes back, it's called emergency because they increased what they pay us and they redacted some things that just didn't belong in the, in the renewal of the contract. The state did those redactions and the state approved this contract.
Oh, you know, okay, because it honestly doesn't really look good, and I have received phone calls like about transparency and all of a sudden, like, it's good that you...
What was taken out was just not relevant.
No, no, that's what I'm talking, thank you very much for specifying that it was the state, that it's not us, because I was getting calls about transparency and why we were doing this. But thank you for saying that it was the state, I appreciate that. If it was us, we won't put, we won't put it there.
Transparency.
Yep, there you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion, a second, to approve a consultant agreement with Richard McCormick for tax collection services?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
That will be my question.
We are, we are working on, um, getting some staff who can manage this part-time. So Rick is helping us just through August 31st, and then we're gonna be on our own from that point on. We don't have anyone to train right now.
So would you be able to hire someone?
We, we, Dr. B.C. and I are working on, on a plan to...
Yes, that is a plan. Because I really, and I spoke to, um, Mr. Silver about it, I really don't want anybody to be working here during the course of the day because it interferes with the job that they have to do during the course of the day. So we're definitely gonna hire somebody for that job.
Okay, and Rick will be able to train that individual in that...
Hopefully, because before now in August, yes. But didn't we, didn't we vote for, didn't we vote on this?
We had a contract just through the end of June, we needed to continue through the summer while we get our plans in place.
Okey-dokey.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion, a second, for authorization to renew a contract with KGND Architects to serve as district architect for the 2022-2023 fiscal year?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
This is gonna be our architect for the year?
I have a question, is this a new architect?
This is a renewal, renewal of the company that did the building condition survey, and that is now involved in the demolition of the Grimes Annex, involved in the oil tank project, so they're, they're involved in all of our capital projects at this time. So this is a year-by-year of contract, and this is the second renewal, first renewal of the contract.
Let me...
It's one year at a time, but we can, we can have it for five years and then we have to go out again.
My question is, since we are having the issues that we discussed, what, what would happen if we say no? If we vote this down? No, the issue is not with them. Okay. The issue is with us. Okay, thank you.
But you vote the way you feel it.
No, I'm just asking, because we did ask that question about, you know...
Right, it's with us, not with them.
So the issue's not with them, it's with us. Good clarification.
6.6. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion, a second, to authorize Bay Oaks Group to serve as insurance consultants for the 2022-2023 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion, a second, for authorization to renew the agreement with Broadspire Services for third-party administration for self-insured liability claims for the 2223 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Wanda?
No, aye, no. I'm sorry, I'm really sorry. It's the one I was looking to say.
Can I please have a motion, a second, to authorize an agreement with Seneca Consulting for administrative and financial consultation services in connection with the Affordable Care Act for 2022-23 fiscal year?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion, a second, for authorization to renew... for authorization to renew the agreement with Spain Agency to provide workers' compensation services to the district for the 2022-2023 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Is this the same one we've been using?
Yes. This is the fourth or fifth year, and the price has never changed, and they have a person here on-site four days a week to manage our workers' comp.
Who is that?
Shelby Fields. And you should know, our premiums have gone down, and our accidents have gone down. Shelby goes out to the schools and works with the all-staff to try to make things safer in each of the buildings.
Good job. Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second for authorization to renew the agreement with the Spain Agency to serve as the retail agent for insurance coverage for the 2022-2023 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wake up.
Any opposed? Three people said aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second for authorization to extend printer maintenance and supply contract added to the services of CBS Xerox for 2022-2023 fiscal year?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second for authorization to pay other school districts for health and related services for the 2022-2023 school year?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Any, anytime we have a child going to a school that is in another school district, could be parochial or private school, we are responsible to pay for the health services provided. There's a state formula, they have to fill it out. It's like $1,200 to $1,300 a child for the year, which is our share of the cost of the nursing services provided by the private or parochial school to our child.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second for authorization for placement of coverage for the 2022-2023 fiscal year with Aflac New York to provide extended health coverage?
Motion. Thank you.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Well, speaking to Aflac, Aflac provides cancer coverage, which is an extension of our, of our insurance, but we don't pay for that, that is paid for by... So each, each of the ones that we previously discussed are through RFPs or bids, and they last for a certain number of years. There are several things that are not on here. Our external auditor is just finishing their final year of the five years. We now have to do an RFP for an auditor, and that will be on another agenda. And so any contractor, like, concrete repairs or other things that are not part of what we're renewing, we have to do either an RFP or a bid, depending upon the type of service, or we can use a bid from the state.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to approve School Improvement Personnel Memorandum P 23-1, dated July 6, 2022?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
This is for the summer programs that we're running. Dr. B.C.?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve Student Services Memorandum Number 1, dated July 6, 2022?
Motion.
Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Are we going to be addressing, you know, you and I have had this discussion before, all of the services that the kids did not receive during the school year right now? Including, like, resource room and everything else?
That's listed in...
No, that's what I'm saying, because I want, I just want to hear it, because even though it's listed, I'm concerned because we got large numbers. And I'm not talking about, like, hey, you missed three days, hey, you missed four sessions. I'm talking about there are students out there that have missed 25 sessions. They have missed, you know, and I know that it was not your doing or anybody, like, for example, at the beginning of the school year, we couldn't, we didn't have anyone. And, like, for example, my son didn't get physical therapy for September, October, all the way till December. So that's three months' worth of therapy. And I know he's not the only one. So I just want to know if we are going to be addressing that in particular.
Was his services made up? Did they make up his services?
No.
Basically, all the supervisors compiled lists of services that was missed, and we are trying to make them up during this, during the summer. It could possibly extend into the school year.
Okay. Thank you, because I just want to make sure that I will, when I'm asked, or when I'm, somebody approaches me about it, I just want to make sure that I give them the exact answer. Thank you very much.
We have started some of them, right?
We, we started past. This is for, for this school year.
Yeah, this is just moving forward.
This is for this school year.
This is just move...
All the past services were filmed.
So... Basically, yes, there was, believe it or not, parents that refused services. They didn't, they felt, they didn't want the services.
But they were all offered.
They were offered.
Yeah.
Um, I was not, I'm going to be very honest with you, I was never offered. As a parent, I was never offered.
Are you talking about this school year or last school year?
This school year.
No, we didn't get to this school year.
No, and even, and even some of the last, last school year, we never, and this is me as a parent, we never made up the entire days. For example, with resource room, there was a lot of them that was not made up. And we had, I think it was OT, no, it was OT or PT. One OT or PT that...
So we're kind of confusing two things.
No, no, but, yeah.
Our makeup services is really for the related services.
Not for the main services, yeah.
Resources is not considered a related service. So in terms of related services, we spent a lot of time making that up for the 22, 20, the 21, 22 school year.
Sorry.
We're moving forward with that, starting in the summer.
And moving probably into next year.
Correct.
So I'll, I will discuss then my personal issue later.
Okay.
Thank you.
T and P T, or is that, those services are...
Oh, related, OT, PT, and speech are the three related services. Resource room is not a related service. I just keep on mentioning it because...
Right. So we do OT, PT, as you're aware, speech, OT, PT. We have limited resources, that's why we say we may have to carry over with that.
We had, we were low in personnel, so...
Yes.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Nobody says anything.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to, for the approval of additional summer work for directors?
Motion.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All in favor, right?
Aye. Aye.
Um, I think I did that already. Oh? Can I please have a motion and second for the appointment of medical staff for the summer 2022 sports physicals?
Motion.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion and second to authorize an employment agreement with Erica Peterson as Parent Resource Center Coordinator? I just, I need a motion and second first.
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Does anybody want a second?
Second, a second. She's second, I think.
No, no, I just wanted to know why we would like to...
Well, there's a motion on the floor, so if, if we're taking this motion back...
She wants to discuss it.
Discuss it.
Oh, discuss it, okay, okay, okay. So I've been a second, so I have no idea what's going on.
Okay. Second.
Motion to table it.
Yeah, postpone it.
Discussion.
To the next meeting.
We didn't discuss it in exec, no?
You want to, you want to discuss it in exec?
We discussed it in executive meeting.
Okay. She wants to go back into exec. So let's go finish the meeting, and then we can come back and adjourn it. Okay, so let's finish, so we need to, um...
Do we have to have a motion to go? I have no idea.
She wants to...
Definitely going to be the next meeting.
Table it. You want to table it for the next meeting? Yeah, okay, okay.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
I'm saying, I'm sorry, I abstained because I have no idea what's going on right now.
So, we may be out of here early. We may be out of here early.
We have three minutes, right?
I have 14.
So what's next?
Acceptance of minute. Can I have a motion and second to accept the minutes of this June 21, 2022 Board of Education meeting?
Motion. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
The new trustees have to abstain, you aren't here.
Right.
You have to abstain, yeah, the most of you. Thank you.
Motion carries. They don't have to abstain, but...
Well, how can they approve the minutes if they weren't in attendance? I never approve minutes if I'm not in attendance. Oh, I see what you're saying, sorry.
It's still passed. It's still passed.
Exactly, I think it's a precautionary, you know, situation.
Okay.
So we have another motion. Adjourn.
Yes, please, please, there's adjourned.
Oh, okay. Motion, second?
Second.
Second.
What's the motion?
I said, motion to adjourn. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. I don't know if everybody's in favor of that. Thank you, everyone, thanks for showing up tonight.